Each candidate will be given a three-minute opening statement, which you all are probably well familiar with. Questions will be delivered by me and will consist of written questions from the audience and, excuse me, questions predefined by the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. No questions will be provided to the candidates prior to the forum's defined questioning period, so nobody's been given any heads up, though I did moderate one a couple of weeks ago. We have tried to bring some new questions to the table, and we've done that. The selected questions will be unbiased and generally addressable by all candidates, and that's particularly guidance for the audience. We do have some lovely ladies in the audience with index cards and pens, my wife and Soon. If you want to write a question, please raise your hand. They'll bring you a card and a pen. You can do that, and they'll bring it up to the stage, and I will work it into the discussion as appropriate. The order of responses will rotate amongst the candidate, so each one will get a chance to have that coveted first position in terms of answering in fair order. Candidates may not address questions or remarks to each other, or all questions will come from me, the moderator. The opening statement will be three minutes. Each question will be a one-minute response, and then we'll close up at the end of the evening with a two-minute close. So let's get started. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We did have our county judges forum here last night. I will note that this is being recorded and will be offered on the Chamber website for those who have not been able to make it this evening, and we will encourage those who weren't able to be here this evening to take advantage of the recordings on the Chamber website and other places so that they can have the full benefit of the questions and responses which are made this evening. So let's get started, and we're going to work through the randomly defined order, and we're going to invite Mr. Sean Nanny to deliver his three-minute opening statement.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Chamber for organizing this forum. I'd like to thank Mr. Blueheart and the staff here at Fort Concho for hosting it. My name is Sean Nanny. I've lived in the county for 31 years, and I've lived in Precinct Four for about 29 years. I'm proud to say that I paid my way through and graduated from ASU. I've been married to my beautiful wife Angela for 25 years now. We have two adult children. My son Jake is 24. My daughter Jenna is 20, and if she lives to be 60, she'll still be my baby girl. I've been self-employed for 25 years as a horse shooter. I've also been self-employed for about 13 years now as a real estate broker, and you don't stay in business that long without standing behind your word and working your tail off. That's how you provide for your family, so you do what you say you're going to do, and you do it well. I was elected to the Cristoval ISD Board of Trustees in 2010. I'm currently the president of that board, and I'm mighty proud of the accomplishments that we have made as a team for the district, for the students, the staff, and most especially the taxpayers. I'm familiar with multimillion-dollar budgets, staffing issues, capital improvement projects, the list goes on. Mainly, I'm familiar with providing the absolute best services for the least amount of financial burden on the taxpayer. I have a proven track record of doing this, and I will continue to do it as your commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to Lori Wilson to deliver her three-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Walt. I am Lori Wilson, and I have been preparing for the last four and a half years to be your next county commissioner. I'm a local girl, born and raised right here in Tom Green County. This is where I've lived my life. This is where I have been educated. This is where I work, have played, worship. This is where I've raised my children, and this is where my grandchildren are being raised. I am deeply rooted in this community. I was raised to believe in serving and giving back. That's what I've spent my life doing. I started serving as a young girl, growing up through my church and through my school organizations. Then, as a parent, I served as a volunteer in public schools. I served in every organization my children have ever been involved in. As a business owner, I served not only our employees but other businesses and organizations in town on their boards of directors and various committees. As an educational consultant, I serve students and their families. In Dove Creek on the Board of Directors, I serve all of our owners. Now that my children are grown, I'm no longer a business owner, and I am not an employee tied to a job. The time is right. It's definitely the right time for change on the Commissioner's Court. I believe I'm the right person to make that happen. The time is right for me personally to step out, step up, and serve the entire county. I have a proven history as a mediator, a facilitator, bringing people together to meet needs and solve problems. I have worked in a wide variety of settings with a wide variety of people. I have worked with million-dollar budgets. I have worked under the restraints of federal and state guidelines. I know how to look at a problem with an open mind and bring the right people together to solve it. If I don't know an answer, I don't mind telling you, and I certainly know how to do the research to go and find it. I believe a county the size of Tom Green needs and deserves a commissioner that is committed, devoted, and available full-time for this job. That has been my pledge since I started publicly campaigning last summer. I will be your full-time, all the time, all-for-you commissioner. Please vote for me, Lori Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Bill Ford to deliver his three-minute opening statement.
Thank you again for hosting this event. I think it's a wonderful location, and the history here is abundant, and it's almost hear the voices of the Buffalo Soldiers and what took place. I think this is more like a stable, so they may not have heard the Buffalo Soldiers. But I've been a county commissioner 10, almost 10, years, and I love my job, and I'm doing a good job. Now, we've, I've been, you talk about experience. I have quite a bit of experience. There's not anyone more equipped on, at this table, to, to knows how to build the roads and do the budget and deal with the issues that come from the legislature and how we do our, we take care of the safety issues in the county with the sheriff, the jail, and the court system. We've had difficult challenges over the years, and we've met them. We've met the budget, the tremendous job on doing the budget. We actually doted a half cent last year. It was, we had to raise the budget back in '17 and '18 because of the, we had those 14 capital murder trials. Now, we've, we're trying to get back there. It looks like we'll be able to do it in the next three years, be able to lower our tax rate to the rate we had back then. I think we're going to experience challenges with inflation, and that affects our materials and our fuel and our stuff to do our roads, but we're replacing the roads that we had damaged back in the snowstorm and ice storm last year, and the price of the materials, the oil-related materials, has obviously gone up with the barrel. So we're, we've done this before, so we're ready. We've got, we're facing challenges with the jail being full, but we've, we've added a public defender's office. So be, we're starting the modeling of that office in a couple of months, or pretty quick, and the magistrate court will help, you know, should be lessening the number of occupied beds in our jail. So we've got, we've got issues to do. We're, we're ready for it, but the most important thing, I think, is going to be the, the bringing on of a new Commissioner's Court judge, and I think that's going to be imperative that he has the forward experienced commissioners to give him the guidance, the wisdom, the experience to move forward. We've got budgets going to be making, and this is his budget. Every time we do a budget, it's a, it's a county judge's budget, so I think it's important that we have the backing and the knowledge and the wherewithal to, to guide the new judge in the, in the follow, in the next few years. So I ask you for your vote in the next four years again.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Coco Simpson to deliver her three-minute opening statement.
Thank you so much, Walt, and the Chamber for hosting this event for us. My name is Coco Simpson, and I'm your candidate for Precinct Four Commissioner. Back in 2017, I was, I served as co-chair on a bond committee in Cristoval. We were working on getting ahead of a population boom that we knew was coming because of the developments that had been approved in the area. The committee was trying its best to develop a proactive plan for our schools, to make the growth what we wanted rather than to let it run over us. Unfortunately, the bond wasn't passed, and the result is portable buildings at both of our campuses in Cristoval instead of beautiful schools. We've absolutely wasted taxpayer dollars on depreciating assets rather than investing in our future, our kids, and our community. A proactive approach is what's needed in Tom Green County right now. We know COSA DC and the Economic Development Corporation are working diligently to increase our industrial and commercial base in, in the county. We know that a population increase is going to come along with this. We know there are two interstates coming to Tom Green County. We know these things and need to plan and invest accordingly. Right now, we have the opportunity to make this growth what we want rather than reacting. The city and county are both in an amazing position with these ARPA funds to pay cash for some big infrastructure projects. Now is the time for these two entities to start working together and planning for what we know is coming. I'm the candidate that can make that happen because I go to the meetings. I take notes. I'm vocal. I ask questions. I can work proactively for all of us. Want to get rid of the Help Wanted signs around town? We need a workforce, but a workforce can't get here without affordable housing. Along with it comes a need for schools, water, sewers, and law enforcement. So what comes first? It's a plan, followed closely by the infrastructure to support that plan, then the housing in schools, and finally, the people. Let's invest this ARPA money into infrastructure that will help make affording, make housing more affordable, and then keep the infrastructure under county control. There's no reason our water districts shouldn't be as profitable and well-maintained as the private ones in this county. I'm the candidate that has taken a stand already to better our community. I'm the candidate who will continue to take the data we have, take the things we know are coming, work with the community and the community leaders to make this county the best it can be. I'm the candidate that will have the foresight to not have to live in a state of reaction, investing our tax dollars rather than just spending them. My name is Coco Simpson, and I am the candidate that will, that will look to the future of Tom Green County in all decisions made as commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll round out our opening statements with Mr. Dustin Barton.
Hello. My name is Dustin Barton. Again, thank y'all for hosting the Chamber, the Ford. This is a very neat setting for, it's kind of changed pace what we've been used to, except for Knickerbocker and the school there. That was neat. All these forums have given us a chance to get together and talk about our beliefs, ideas, answer questions for y'all. Like I said, my name is Dustin Barton. I'm running for Tom Green County Commissioner of Precinct Four. I was born here in San Angelo, raised in the actual town of Knickerbocker, went to school in Cristoval. I've been in this precinct primarily my entire 48 years of life, nearly 49 coming up after the election in March. I did leave for two years and nine months of my life, but I got back here as fast as I could. I went to Tarleton for a couple of years to be a football player. That didn't work out. Came back here and graduated from Angelo State University. Left again to go work in Beaumont for the Texas Youth Commission. Texas Youth Commission was incredibly rewarding job, but it was living in Beaumont and not Precinct Four of San Angelo, Cristoval, Knickerbocker area in Tom Green County. I came back and have been working for Tom Green County with juvenile probation for the last 24 years. Also a very, very rewarding job, but over that time, when you work for 24 years for a government municipality, you kind of look around and see some things that you don't agree with or won't change. In the last couple of years, after the last election, people in the precinct, of the more rural areas of the precinct, people that maybe didn't save my life but shaped my life to make me a happy, successful person, came to me asking for my help. They were saying, why don't you run for county commissioner? Why don't you run for county commissioner? Now, having a job that I do love, you know, I thought about it, prayed about it, and got the answer. Well, I guess my wife got the answer after she prayed about it and told me to do it. And I agreed with her, and we went full force into this thing. I met my wife while working in Tom Green County, while working for juvenile probation. She was an educator. We have two kids. We have a 25-year-old daughter, a 18-year-old son, and a four-year-old grandson. And I'll tell you what, grandchildren are a lot more fun. That's a joke. I love my kids. They're a blast. But I was asked to come up here and run for this job, and I went feet-first into it and headstrong because I do love Precinct Four. I'm a homegrown all-the-way-through candidate, and working for the people of Precinct Four on a bigger scale than just working for juvenile probation would be the biggest pleasure in my life. And my views are very, very conservative, and I feel that in the times that are coming and the way our nation is going with inflation and everything like that, that it is time for conservative candidates. So I'm asking for your, or true conservative candidate, so I'm asking for your vote on March 1st.
Thank you very much. Let's give all these great candidates a round of applause. Before we get into the questioning, I just want to say a couple of things. We can't have a democracy, and I recognize we're a republic, but I'm going to say democracy without choices. And what you see before you are five choices for a very, very key position, and I want to thank each and every one of you for running and providing us those choices. Running is tough. I'd far prefer being the asker of the question than the answer of the questions, and I know, having been through these forums for many years, how tough this is to be in front of you all under these circumstances. So let's give these great San, Tom Green County residents another round of applause for their service. So let's get into questions. I'd say at the onset that these questions were developed in collaboration with a number of different organizations across the county. Last time we discussed, I think that we were a little skewed, a little heavy on economic development. We will touch on economic development this evening, but we're going to go into some other areas, and hopefully some areas that you have not been asked about so far. I know you've had several of these, but the, the dimensions of being a county commissioner are many, and I'd like to touch on a number of them this evening. I also invite those from the audience, again, if you've come in late and didn't hear the original announcement. There's two lovely ladies here willing and able to support you and your ability to give us written questions at the podium. Raise your hand, and they'll bring you a card and a pen, and they'll deliver the question up here, and we'll work it into the agenda. So we're going to start off a little easy, and then we're going to get a little harder. Number one, and we're going to start, and we're going to rotate, as I said before, so Lori Wilson will be the first on this round, and then we'll all take turns because it's so much fun to be the first. If elected, what's the number-one thing that you would like to accomplish during your tenure as county commissioner?
Well, if elected, the number-one thing, and that's a really hard, that is a very hard question. You say you're starting off easy, but it's really not. There are so many things that you want to accomplish, but I think the first thing is to reassure the residents of Precinct Four that I really am here all the time, all for them. It's all about relationships. I want to keep the lines of communication open with them and for them to know that I'm completely accessible to their ideas, their thoughts, their needs. Also, the same thing with the county employees. I know a lot of them are very nervous about what's going to happen. They have a change in judge. They have a change in commissioner coming, but developing those relationships, finding out what their needs are and how we can better serve and help them, that's really priority one. It's all about serving.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're going to ask Bill Ford the same question. If elected or reelected in your case, what is the number-one thing you'd like to accomplish during your next tenure as commissioner, county commissioner?
Well, thank you. I think it's, it really, this is a pretty easy question for me because there's so many things that we're still working on. We're still rebuilding roads from the storm, the snow beginning, and we're still putting in together to, in our budget cycle, to find a way to keep our, try to get our raises for our, especially our law enforcement on jailers, so we can keep our staff up at those areas. And to, with inflation coming on, we're going to have to find a way to keep the employees working for the county, so that's going to be another thing we need to do, is try to find a way to increase. We did it two years ago. We'll have to do it again, is find a way to increase their salary so they can, they'll feel comfortable about staying and not leaving because there are a lot of things out there enticed and a lot of job openings. So it's going to be important that we do a, continue to do what we're doing in, in a big way, and really, and another thing is just to help the new county judge find his place.
Thank you very much. Coco Simpson, same question. If elected, what's the number-one thing that you'd like to accomplish during your tenure as county commissioner?
Oh, there are so many things. First and foremost, I want the date of Commissioner's Court changed so that we can attend city council meetings. They're at the same time and date currently, so people have to choose which to attend. This was brought up by Commissioner Farmer Tuesday, honestly, so I think that's, that's something that's going to happen before I even get there. The other one is replacing our single health authority with a board. That's a short-term one that's super easy to do and can be quick. My long-term, my long-term goal is to fund our sheriff's department more so they can properly protect our county. We can do that with the, the funds from the public defender's office. We currently spend about $250 million on indigent defense, and our public defender's office is going to alleviate a lot of that debt. We can move that over to our sheriff's department and really beef it up without having any added expense to our taxpayer and really affect us in a very positive way.
Thank you very much. We're going to go now to Mr. Dustin Barton, same question. If elected, what's the number-one thing that you'd like to accomplish during your tenure as county commissioner?
First thing I want to accomplish is, or main thing I want to accomplish is get the trust back to the constituents, re-under their trust and respect that, for the main reason that I was asked to run. So they're not hoping for the best from their government. They should expect the best from their government. We have some ARPA funding, a large amount of ARPA funding coming in, and some of that has already got a group. We got a group with the commissioners and another board group that is coming together and make plans to help with the infrastructure projects and other things, but that money has to be, it's government money, so it's got to be taken care of in a certain amount of time. We have to have all POs and contracts end by December 31st, 2024, and then there'll be another round of ARPA funding. Right now, they've got about, from what I hear, $11.5 million, and next year, there'll be another $11.5 million. So we need to get that money spent on as many projects as we can so our budget gives back to employees and the taxpayer.
We're going to finish up with Sean Nanny, same question. If elected, what is the number-one thing you would like to accomplish during your tenure as county commissioner?
I want to lower the taxes, and I know that's easier said than done, but I've actually done it. I want to leave the most money possible in the taxpayers' pockets because with money in their pockets, when they're not just scrambling to pay rent and car insurance and everything else, they have more disposable income that supports our local businesses. And the more money generated locally supports and retains our businesses, our jobs, and our residents. And these businesses will attract consumers from outside of the county that will be spending their money here, and we're receiving that sales tax, and it, it snowballs at that point, and it helps our community and raises money by keeping our tax pay, our taxes low.
Thank you very much. That's question one. We're going to move on to question two, and we heard several folks mention ARPA, and we're going to do a deeper dive into the ARPA question. For question two, we're going to ask Mr. Bill Ford to be the first responder to this question, and it is as follows. The American Rescue Plan, or ARPA, has brought significant funds to Tom Green County. Here's the question. What projects would you like to see undertaking using what remains of these funds, roughly $11 million, are left to be allocated and spent?
It's a good one because I've been spending a lot of time on it in the last few weeks, but we have a, it may not be 11 and a half. It may be 10 because that, if they, if we take the, the upfront money of 10 million, we lose a couple of million, but we get it faster. So that hadn't been decided yet, but that's, that's, that's on the table. And what we do with that money is critical, is most of it is going to be spent in doing some projects out in the county and the city too with, where we're doing, it's, a lot of it's water, has to do with water and, and issues like that. Now, some of the money is being spent to repay salaries that were lost in the COVID, so we see that. I'm particularly interested in waters issues in the Cristoval area because of the fragility, the fragile nature of the water system down there, so we got a lot on the plate.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're going to go with Coco Simpson, same question. What projects would you like to see undertaken using the remainder of the ARPA funds?
Well, since we can't build roads and bridges with this money, it leaves, it leaves sewers and water for our infrastructure projects that we can use for this. Some of the money has been used for mental health. That's a big thing, and it's done some good stuff, but sewers and water is the infrastructure that I think is most needed in town. I went to the Chamber, the Chamber luncheon on Wednesday, and housing was a big deal. So knowing a couple of developers in town, I understand that putting the infrastructure into developments has been a big barrier to getting affordable housing here in the community. They can't make, they can't make money losing money building infrastructure, so all we're getting are these great big homes. The median price of a home is over $300,000, which is incredible to a Realtor, but to a normal person, that's, that's unfeasible. It's just not going to work. So we need to spend this money on infrastructure projects so that we can have more affordable housing, so we can get more of a workforce into Tom Green County and really start boosting our economy and doing some things.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to Dustin Barton, same question. What projects would you like to see undertaken using what remains of the ARPA funds?
Well, of course, the water project in Cristoval is going to be huge, and what's going on with that is the four wells that are in the Seapark, only two of them work and then, that I know of, and that dam has been there. I'm going to say it was probably built when FDR was president.
140.
100, okay. Twice as long. And it, it, it is a ticking time bomb. If you go stand on that bridge when we get two inches of rain, the head of the South Concho River, it comes down, it comes rolling, and that bridge, that is something we really, because if it goes, Cristoval is out of water. I mean, they don't have anything they can do with it, so we really need to put as much toward ARPA funds as that we can. I'm sure the actual cost of that water problem is going to be more than we can spend out of the ARPA funds, but we need to put as much to that as we can. An off-saw on the infrastructure. We need to have places, like Ms. Simpson said, to up and running so we can boost our economy.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to Mr. Sean Nanny, and I offer the same question. What project would you like to see undertaken using what remains of the DARPA funds?
Well, it would be a broad project that ties into my answer to the last question of lowering taxes, but to, to answer your question, you need to talk to the people and not just the people at Cristoval, not just the people at Dove Creek and Knickerbocker, not just the people within our San Angelo city limits, but see what benefits everybody the most. I want to use it to grow our, grow our economy and improve the quality of life for all of the residents of Precinct Four and Tom Green County.
Thank you very much. We're going to finish question two with Lori Wilson with the same question. What projects would you like to see undertaken using the remainder of the ARPA funds?
Well, unfortunately, some of the projects that we would like to see undertaken don't meet guidelines. That's a fine line that we have to walk. We have a tremendous committee that's put in place. There's 10 of them, seven county employees and three non-county employees, all experts in their field, and they look over this very closely when deciding how these funds are allocated. 6.7 little over has been allocated so far. We've got 4.8 left from the first round. There's another 11.5 that we should be getting by the end of the year. Those do all have to all be allocated by 2024. So water, of course, I would really like to see a way to have that help Cristoval, mineral wells, road. It's still the guideline issue. For me, it's the project that's going to benefit the most people, have the most long-term effect. Buy-in from the community is important because we are representing them and spending this money on their behalf.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to question number three, and we're going to shift gears a little bit here, and we're going to talk about some of the additional roles that the county commissioners have. I'm going to give a little preamble, and I'm going to ask a question, and we're going to start this time with Coco Simpson. We've seen a lot of emergencies in our area over time and specifically in the last couple of years, and here's the question. As county commissioner, what do you see as your role and how you would address the mitigation and management of natural and man-made emergencies?
Well, as county commissioner, we are the first line of defense for all of the citizens of Tom Green County. I think our role is to, to talk to the people who, who are most educated about what's going on, like the COVID situation. There is a, there are a plethora of medical providers here in Tom Green County and scientists that we should have been consulting on, on our COVID response. If we have a tornado or we have a flood or any other kind of natural disaster, there, there is a whole group of people here in town who know what they're doing. I believe our role as commissioners is to, is to get, bring the best people together to mitigate the situation as best possible. I look at us as kind of the liaison between, between the citizens and the powers that be that know what's actually between, between the citizens and the, the powers that be that know what's actually going on. It may be that we need to get out there with a shovel and, and move things, but I think more than anything, we need to use our heads and get the right people together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barton, same question. As county commissioner, what do you see as your role, and how would you address mitigation and management of natural and man-made emergencies?
Well, I think I see the role is getting communication out there and being a communicator to let people know what's going on, where they can go for help, or hopefully, you know, you have other people communicate with you. But we need to be able to communicate with the public of what's going on. During last year's snowvid, that was one thing, that we had no real communication because we lost all power, you know, we didn't have running water, and issues like that. And I didn't know what our response was. It was, it was an odd situation that just very seldom happens here, so what would our response be? I didn't see the response that much, except after, when we were going back and having to put up power lines and other issues like that. But there was no communication. So I, I think the best thing, the role of the commissioner would be to get out in the precinct and be able to communicate these things, what's going on, what help is coming, or find out what help is needed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nanny, same question. As county commissioner, what do you see as your role, and how would you address the mitigation and management of natural and man-made disasters?
The first thing is make sure the safety and the well-being of the residents. And the county judge is the ultimate authority over these emergency matters. So you've got to report what's going on in your area back to the judge so he can react accordingly, and be that middleman between the residents and what's going on in your area, and he will, and the emergency teams, and let him have a plan of attack, and let him know what's going on, so everyone can benefit.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to Ms. Wilson, same question. As county commissioner, what do you see as your role, and how would you address mitigation and management of natural and man-made disasters?
Thank you, Walt. Actually, there is a plan in place for that. We have an emergency management system. We have a director of this program. His name is Jerry Huffman. He offices out at the airport. Ron Perry, actually, one of the candidates for JP3, has held that position before. He's actually the one that's in charge, and like equal tiered with him would be the county judge and the city mayor. That's your executive committee for the emergency management system. A county commissioner's role is to ensure that we have a continuity of government in place during these times, to be available to the judge, the mayor, and the director as they see fit, whatever they need us to do, however they need us to serve. That's our role, to be available to serve them, and in that manner, we serve the whole county.
Thank you very much. And we'll finish question number three with Mr. Bill Ford, same question. As county commissioner, what do you see as your role, and how would you address the mitigation and management of natural and man-made emergencies?
Well, first, Lori's correct. There is a, a plan in place. When we become a commissioner, we're mandated to take courses, and we get, we train in every single facet of breakdown on how, how to deal with emergency. It depends on where it is and what it is, and we do communicate with the county judge. We do, we do communicate with VFDs or whoever's necessary. And then, in my case, during the Snowmageddon situation, we were having to try to find communication devices that could reach out. And I dealt a lot with the Lower Colorado River Authority, helping the transmission repair lines get into private land and over, over county roads that were impassable and iced up. And we ended up tearing up 19 miles of road, but we got the, the equipment in to, actually, they spent in three days and nights, they were able to connect a very vital connection of the grid, to complete the grid on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. It was an amazing event to watch, and watch these guys from all over the country in there working. It was, but we're, we're told, we, we know exactly what position we're supposed to do and who we answer to. So it's, it's connected very well.
Thank you very much. That's very, I appreciate all the answers for question number three. We're going to move on to question number four, and I'd like to ask a couple different questions regarding the budget and the budget process. We're going to start this question four with Mr. Barton, and it is as follows. I'll make a comment, then I'll ask a question. One of the duties of the Commissioners Court is to lead the development implementation of the county budget in conjunction with the, the county judge. What is your assessment of the current tax rates and current budget, and are there any changes or innovations that you'd like to see implemented?
Well, when you look at the tax rate, the tax rate, when you look at the actual number, the 4.5, 4.5 number, looks really good. But the assessments on private property lately have skyrocketed. My wife and I used to think it was really cute when we got our new tax deal, and it'd gone up $1,200. We thought we were sitting on a gold mine. But then when it pops up 5,000, 10,000, 15,000 in consecutive years, you know you're not sitting on a gold mine, you're sitting on a pile of something else, because you're paying so much in taxes. When the tax rate hadn't changed, they say they've cut it a fifth of a penny, or an eighth of a penny, or whatever they decided. You're still paying more in taxes. So the deal, once you get the budget and you make the cuts of the budget, because every group in Tom Green County is going to present a budget to the commissioners and with auditor and treasurer, and they've got to start whittling that thing down and get it to where it fits into the budget for the year. But there is ways, we need to cut the tax rate substantially to give constituents more of their own money, so they can go out and spend it, and then, you know, we'll get it back up some during the sales tax.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nanny, I'd ask you the same question. What's your assessment of the current tax rate and current budget, and are there any changes or innovations that you'd like to see implemented?
Well, inflation is killing us. And yeah, we can all say taxes are too high. They did, in fact, cut, cut the taxes a little, which I'm thankful for, but as it said, we all know the game of smoke and mirrors. Your tax rate goes down, but your assessed values go way up, and people say, well, my, the, my taxes are higher, and, and the county officials are saying, well, we cut taxes, and, and that's where a lot of trust is lost. Both sides are correct. Yeah, they did cut taxes, but your bill did go up. So you've got to utilize outside resources. There is money out there. I know we've got the proper team up there looking for it, but, but there is, you've got to beat the bushes, you've got to get creative, and find money to keep money in our taxpayer pockets, because it, it's killing us, when, when you can't hardly pay your own bills just to survive because of your taxes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Lori Wilson and ask the same question. What is your assessment of the current tax rates and current budget, and are there any innovations or changes that you would like to see implemented?
Our assessment, my assessment of our current tax rates and budget is that the tax rate has been going down consistently every year since 2019. It is already in place that that rate's going to go down again. If you look at your statement from the appraisal district, your county, I think, is the lowest tax rate that you're paying on there. I think we're doing a fantastic job. If you're wanting somebody that's going to bash the county and its employees and their process, that's not me. They're working hard for you, and they are doing a fantastic job. They have a great process in place. There's a worksheet that they use. It's not really the judge's budget. He presents it. It's your budget. It's our budget. You have an auditor that's involved. You have department heads that are involved, who are seeking information from their department employees. It's a process. There's public hearings. Everyone has an opportunity to be involved in this. The only thing that I would like to see, and I don't really know that it falls into the budget category of your question, but the purchasing process. Our hands are tied with regulations on some of that, but I would like to look at that further.
Oh, thank you very much. Bill Ford, same question. What is your assessment of the current tax rate and current budget, and are there any changes or innovations that you'd like to see implemented?
Well, we're in the process. I mean, we're early in, in the, in the process, but I spent a lot of hours and times dealing with the auditor and the, we're about the plans for the future, because what we have is, we've got built-in a tax reduction for the next two years. But some of the things that come into play, you don't always have a control over, like inflation, but if the sales tax goes up, like it's 21% rise, then we have to, by law, we have to adjust the, the property tax down to accommodate for the rise in sales tax. It's all got to meet, match up to that three and a half cent. So it's, it is a juggling act, but I think things are in place for a, a reduction in our sales tax rate. However, there is always a caveat of something we don't know is coming in. We've got a thing called the federal government that's doing some bizarre things, and we also have inflation that is, is taking its niche in, in the budget, and it's, it's imperative that we do some things to help our employees. So it's, it's going to be a, a good one, but you're right. It is a, it's the people's budget, and we're working hard to make it that way. A good one.
Thank you very much. And we're going to round out question four with Coco Simpson, same question. What's your assessment of the current tax rate and current budget, and are there any changes or innovations that you would like to see implemented?
Well, as a tax preparer, I hate paying taxes anyway, but our county taxes are only about a quarter of what we pay in property tax. They're the lowest part, the lowest piece of it. I don't think it's that awful. I am excited to set through budget hearings this, this summer and see if there are any duplicative, duplicative services that the county offers that the city also offers, or that are just really not necessary. But from what I've noticed and the people that I've spoken with within the county, there isn't a whole lot of waste going on in the county. So I would rather focus, instead of focus on lowering our tax rate, I'd rather focus on increasing our tax base. That's really the best way to decrease our taxes. If we get more people throwing in the pot here, it's going to make it a whole, cost a whole lot less for all of us. So that's where I would rather spend the, spend the time and energy is working on how we're going to make our county better and make more people come in and spend money here.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to have a follow-up question on the budget issue, and question number five, we're going to start with Mr. Sean Nanny as the first responder. I'm going to read a little statement, then I'm going to ask a question. Two years ago, Tom Green County undertook a study and analysis of county employee compensation that revealed a lack of competitiveness when compared to other counties in Texas. And even with a $1.2 million additional investment being made to pay and benefits, our county employee compensation was only about the 60th percentile statewide. The current inflationary environment and the competition for qualified employees will certainly be an issue going forward. And here's the question, Mr. Nanny. Given the fact that we're lagging many other counties in terms of employee compensation, and with inflationary cycle upon us, how would you ensure that we recruit and retain the most qualified county employees for the short, the medium, and the long term?
Well, that's, our county's not facing anything different than our nation is. The workforce is not there. And here we are, out here with oil picking up. We've got to compete with high-paying oilfield jobs. And, I mean, if you're a jailer and the, the guy over at Hobby Lobby's making more than you, that's kind of slap in the face. So we have got to go back to the drawing board, give these guys better pay, let them know how valued they are, and that usually comes with the form of a paycheck, but there's other perks, you know, maybe some paid time off, maybe a more flexible schedule. You know, more pay does not always make somebody happy. It's, it's the work environment you're in, and how you're treated, and how you're valued. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Lori Wilson with the same question. Given the fact we're lagging many other counties in terms of employee compensation with inflationary cycle upon us, how would you ensure that we recruit and retain qualified county employees for the short, medium, and long term?
Well, we need to be there and support our wonderful human resources department, make sure that they have what they need in their recruitment efforts. But we're slammed on these comparison studies. We may be comparable to places like Abilene Midland, Odessa Lubak in size, but we are not comparable to them in tax base. We do not sit on an interstate. We do not have the revenue coming in that they have to pay these salaries. So when you look at being competitive, we are not going to be there financially. So we have to find other ways, other things to promote. Our lifestyle, there is nowhere like Tom Green County to live. Other perks, I, I know of one department head who's already trying to do things like take their people to lunch on Friday and, and buy lunch for them for special rewards. It's, it's little things like that. We've got to get creative. We've got to think outside the box, and all work together to find ways to make employment for the county more attractive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bill Ford, same question. Given the fact that we're lagging many other counties in terms of employee compensation with inflationary cycle upon us, how would you ensure that we recruit and retain the most qualified employees over the short, medium, and long term?
We thought we had fixed it back a couple of years ago when we gave them a 5% pay raise. That didn't pan out of, obviously, with all this going on. So what we're doing is, is we've, we're, we're going to take advantage of some of these funds that we're getting, that can make some of our pressure from other sides of the budget, where we can adjust the, the pay stuff. We're going to try to make those adjustments. It looks like the plan in place is going to be for a, across the board, especially for our law enforcement and our jailers, to retain them. We're, we're, we're not close. My road and bridge crew is $2 or $3 an hour behind what they can get down the street. So it's something we need to continue to be working on. It's not going to go away. It's always going to be that way, with, just like you said, you know, 20 bucks an hour at Hobby Lobby, and you were making 17, the best, you know. We've got to do better, and, and the, we can't compete with the jailers in, in other towns, and, because they're $5 to $6 more an hour. So it's, we're working hard. It's going to make it, though.
Very well, thank you. Coco Simpson, same question. Given the fact we're lagging many other counties in terms of employee compensation with an inflationary cycle upon us, how would you ensure that we retain the most qualified employees over the short, medium, and long term?
Well, it's not always about the money. I know I've left good-paying jobs for lesser-paying jobs because the environment was much more conducive to me. It, it made me happier. So I don't think employee pay is always about the money. So I think that we need to look into what perks we can offer county employees that are free to the taxpayer. Maybe it is an extra day off. Maybe you work a four-day work week, you know? What, what out-of-the-box things can we implement that don't cost the taxpayer any money, but really affect the employee in a positive way? Also, this goes back to the, the question prior to this. We need to work on expanding our tax base, so we have more people to throw into the pot, so we can pay our employees more. As more, as more employers get here, wages have to go up. So this is something that the county is going to have to address at some point or another, paying people properly, or we won't have employees working here. They're going to go somewhere else. So that's another thing, sitting through budget hearings this summer, I want to see where we can pull from and put to.
Thank you very much. And we'll round out question number five with Mr. Dustin Barton, same question. Given the fact that we're lagging many other counties in terms of employee compensation with inflationary cycle upon us, how would you ensure that we recruit and retain the most qualified employees for the short, medium, and long term?
Well, working for the county the past 24 years, it's been an issue, because we are lagging behind other counties. It's been an issue in our department. Each year, they have tried to give us raises. Probably in 24 years, there's been two years that I didn't get a raise from the year before. We have gone as our own, because working for juvenile probation, we have gone and lobbied the state and gotten a one-time state raise. Other departments can't do that. So one thing we have to do is, is look, there's a lot of people that work in the county that are very satisfied with their paycheck. We have some very high-paid individuals that do deserve it, that work up in, in the upper end of running this county. But a lot of the places that were, were hurt are the manual labor shovel-ready jobs, road and bridge groups. It's hard to keep those employees when they can go to the oilfield. You have jailers, and we've got to go and find a way with probably more economic development, and, well.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to remind the audience that we are taking questions and writing at the podium. If you all are interested in filling out a card and having it sent up, please raise your hand, and we will have a card delivered to you, and have it delivered right here to the, to the desk. So we appreciate that. I think we're going to stick with, with budget questions, and this, this has come up a number of times. We're going to start with Lori, Lori Wilson on this one.
Yeah, I did.
You did?
Question number two.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, question number two.
Sorry.
I wouldn't skip.
You, Bill.
I wouldn't skip.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, I'm, I'm marking them off tonight. No, it's important. It's very complicated. All right. Lori Wilson. County library system has roughly 50 employees. It's one of the larger employers in the county government. That's the statement. The question is, what do you see as the future for the public library system in Tom Green County?
Unlimited. The sky's the limit, almost. I wish budget-wise it could be, but, but boy, they help themselves on budget. There, I always call, I call Jill the grant girl. It's almost every meeting, it seems like she is there with a grant proposal. She's going out and finding that money to use in the library. I did one of my learning with Lorie's recently on the tablets that she got with grant money. I know people think we don't use books as I know people think we don't use books as much, and I'm sure that's true, but you cannot beat the smell of walking into a library and opening a book and putting your hands on that. But they have the technology going already. Their programs are phenomenal. Did you know they do stargazing parties on the roof? They just got through having a huge game board convention contest thing this past weekend. They, they're a very happening place and it's a beautiful building. We've got that Helen's Bistro on Cafe right there. There, it's, it's an unpolished gemstone. I'm real excited about the renovations on the North Side Library. That's been needed for a long time. I'm a huge library supporter.
Thank you very much. Bill Ford.
Well, the renovations are coming.
I know, I'm excited.
We got, we got the money and we're going to do the renovations on North Side Library. It's going to be great. Bigger and better and more accessible, you know, with Wi-Fi.
Okay. What do you see as the future of the public library system for Tom Green County? You started to answer, but go ahead, please.
Well, I mean, the sky's the limit. I mean, with Jill in there and the things that we're getting done, it's incredible. It is, it's a shining star for the state and really a big one for Tom Green County. But I mean, if you, if you take the time and go from the basement to the top and you see the amazing things are going on just in that facility, not counting the West Side or North Side that was coming up. So we really are, are blessed to have the kind of people that we have. She's got staff that gets grants from, I mean, we have no idea where they get them. But it's beautiful stuff and then they got the arts and crafts stuff and the machinery and the, they 3D computer that builds, that's, that's over my pay grade. But that is absolutely the neatest place we've got. And I love going over there. Besides that, it's the best deli in town.
I got a joke about that. I'll tell you later.
Okay.
All right, we'll go to Coco Simpson. Same question. What do you see as the future for the Tom Green Public Library System?
Well, hopefully the library just keeps expanding. It's such an incredible asset to the community, not only because of all of the things that it offers, which are incredible. There's a cool maker space down at the bottom. But they do self-fund quite a bit. The library is one of the, the library is not mandated. We don't have to fund the library. And honestly, I think if the county stopped funding the library, I don't think it would go anywhere. There's friends of the library that would keep that thing going nonstop. And they do. They raise so much money and they do so many really amazing things at that library that I hope that, I hope that the library just keeps going and going. As an asset to the community, especially on the North Side and the very underfunded communities, that library is one of the only places kids have access to computers or internet, any number of things and can go and learn and immerse themselves in a book and take them to some whole other world. I mean, it's, it's just, it's such an incredible thing.
No, thank you very much. Mr. Barton, same question. What do you see as the future for the Tom Green Library System?
Yeah, I think we're all in agreeance of how good our library, downtown library is. Amazing things. They've actually moved on with the times. I mean, the old book thing, yes, it, it is great to walk in the library and be able to see all the old books and everything, but the technology they've come up with, the 3D printer and all the stuff they're doing is just freaking amazing. But it's the staff there and they will keep that thing. Yeah, they come up with money if we stop funding them, whatever. The library system would be fine. But I mean, just the staff, they, they're very creative. They send out emails and stuff asking for, so they can work children's programs, asking for buttons, plastic bottles, anything, you know, toilet paper rolls. They do a lot of that on their own. The one thing I would like to see is, we're talking about North Side and the branches of the library. I wish we could bring a little bit more of that without costing the taxpayer anymore out to the outer branches so there would be more access because the downtown library, for some people, is kind of hard to get to, especially for younger folks.
Well, thank you very much. And we'll finish question number six with Mr. Nanny. Same question. What do you see as the future for the public library system in Tom Green County, sir?
That, that library is loved and cherished by the people of Tom Green County and the future of it is going to probably pleasantly surprise us with that staff that's down there in charge of it. So much education, not just for children, but adults as well. May not believe it, but there are some people that don't have computer access and that's their sole means of computer access. But something that's of particular interest to me is how they preserve and promote the history of Tom Green County and that, that is very important. If you don't know your history, you're destined to repeat it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the great answers so far. Once again, I'll remind everyone that if you have any written questions, please send them forward. We've got some folks out there willing to help you with that. I'm going to move into my personal favorite topic set, which is economic development. I promised we would touch on this. It was the star topic last night with the county judges forum. So the new county judge is certainly going to be into this mindset, I think, regardless of who wins the race. But I'm going to ask a very simple question. We're going to start this one with Mr. Bill Ford. What do you see as the county's role in the development of the economy in Tom Green County?
Well, it's enormous. I mean, think about it. We, we have the issues that we, we don't control what's outside of city limits, but we contribute to what's inside of city limits and what's out. And so there are things that are going on that you guys bring to us, the Economic Development Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, will bring to us these amazing companies that want to come in and put mirrors out in the middle of a corn, a cotton field and collect sunrays and turn it into a lightbulb lighting up. I mean, they're just miracles of life, but there's, they're putting in thousands of them. We've got them thousands of them all over the county. The benefit is that economic development income that goes into the schools, the neighborhoods, the employment, all those things are productive and will continue over the next 20 years. The second deal is we have a lot of economic development with your companies that come in looking for an abatement, a tax abatement, if they can employ 50 or 100 deal. We've jumped all over those and we're doing them. And we'll continue to because we're going to, we're on the fringe of the, of the oil patch, but we'll, we'll contribute as we go.
Appreciate that. I'm going to ask Ms. Coco Simpson, same question. What do you see as the county's role in the development of the economy in Tom Green County?
Well, as a commissioner, I feel that we are the liaison between the citizen voters and the powers that be that are making the decisions about our county. So we, as commissioners, need to have a very active role with COSD-DC and the Economic Development Corporation in kind of steering where we want things to go. Bill mentioned the solar farm. Had he asked anybody out in, in the Crystalville area about that, we'd all said no. We have to drive past that thing for the rest of our lives and it employs two people and it's taxpayer-funded to build it and we gave them an abatement on top of that. So it's not a win for Tom Green County, although it, it may seem like it in some ways. I think really the citizens need to be involved and we, as the commissioners, are their voice in economic development. And we need to really think about Tom Green County first in every decision we make as commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barton, same question. What do you see as the county's role in the development of the economy in Tom Green County?
Oh, I think the county's got a very important role, but kind of on the deal of the tax abatement on these things, this new green energy, yes, we have some mirrored things going out, heating up everything, but you drive past them, you have two employees, you have tax abatements and all this. If these big companies are coming in, especially with those coming in the last couple of years, they're government-funded and we're giving them tax abatements and they're bringing in two employees. If you have these large companies coming in, yes, we, we, we got to get away from giving a total tax abatement. I mean, that, that right there is going to solve a whole bunch of budget problems or shortages because we, we're giving these windmills, they came in, they never had to pay taxes when those windmills came in. They've blotted us. The technology, yes, we don't get any electricity from these windmills. So, you know, we're not getting anything from them. The schools do get some things, which is amazing, but that tax abatement right there is solving a huge budget issue if we just make them pay their fair share of taxes.
Thank you very much. I'm asking Sean Nanny, same question. What do you see the county's role in the development of the economy in Tom Green County?
Well, I'm going to keep preaching it and that's keeping taxes low. I mean, you want to attract businesses and industry and jobs here, but you have got to retain those people. Here in Tom Green County, we've got it all. We've got rivers, lakes, we've got the history, we've got an airport, we've got an Air Force Base, we've got excellent restaurants. But, but you've got to keep those workers with enough money in their pocket to support these things and enjoy this community. And economic development, to me, is the creation of wealth which the community benefits from. And, and bringing in those outside businesses and they bring workers with them, or they bring jobs for our workers, but the revenue is increased and more money is pumped into our economy.
Thank you very much. And we're going to round out question number seven with Lori Wilson, asking her the same question. What do you see the county's role is in the expand, or in the development of the economy of Tom Green County?
Thank you, Walt. The county's role, it's not really maybe very visible because you always hear about the city. You hear about the Chamber of Commerce, your economic development, the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, Downtown San Angelo. You hear about those and you don't really necessarily know what role the county plays. We're not as predominant in that. I'm not sure if there is more that we could be doing that we're not, but we need to really be a great ambassador for this county, a great spokesman for this county. We need to back and support our other stakeholders and, and work with the ones I've mentioned, including Angelo State University, Goodfellow Air Force Base, Shanner Hospital Systems, the school districts in town. It's all about partnerships and relationships and coming together to solve those problems and meet those needs. Also, you also need to be working with your residents of your county, too, because how those developments happen, what type of development they are, it affects them and their homes and their values and their lives. So you need to not forget and include everyone in this process.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving into question number eight. We will do 10 questions tonight, so we're at the home stretch here, guys. I'm going to continue in the vein of economic development, going to ask you all the question I asked you all before in our last time together at the library. But it's one that's of a forefront of the chamber's thinking and the community's thinking. And it was a topic of our luncheon this month at the Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to start with Coco Simpson on this one. And it's another county's role question, which is, what do you see the county's role in the expansion of the housing inventory of Tom Green County?
Well, I attended that luncheon and it was a great, it was a great presentation by Kristin. But a big part of it is that there is not affordable housing in the county. The median home price right now is over $300,000, which is not reasonable for most people. So as I mentioned in my opening statement, we are sitting on a whole lot of ARPA funding right now, the county and the city both. And now is the time that we need to get together, these two entities need to get together and start working together and planning for our future. Let's direct this growth that we know is coming and let's put some infrastructure in so we can actually have some affordable housing. As I said before, I've got some friends that are developers and the infrastructure is the big barrier to entry on them making some developments that have affordable housing. Usually they can take a little loss on the, on the lot and make it back up on the house, but the margins are so short on houses right now that they can't even afford to do that. So they're just not building. So that's something we really need to look into.
Thank you very much. Dustin Barton, same question. What do you see the county's role in the expansion of the housing inventory of Tom Green County?
We got to help them out all we can, but it, it comes back to an issue. When we're building houses or trying to build houses, but the, you know, the prices skyrocketed on just lumber and raw materials. I mean, it goes back to, it's impossible to build roads right now because of price of collegiate payment. But we need to be involved with them and it's economic development, you know, if you want those houses built, we need to be able to bring in industry, serviceable jobs for people to be attracted to. And then that, that demand will help us get with projects to where we are building. We have apartments going up in town, but it took so long, we, we got to a spot where we were behind when the last oil bomb hit. I mean, our hotel rooms were completely stacked and, you know, we're having bills of $300 a night for people to stay in hotel rooms and having, their companies having to pay them just so they would have employees that could drive 90 miles. But yeah, it's just one of those things, we got to be helpful as we can, go in there and give them as much help as we can to be able to build.
Thank you very much. Sean Nanny, same question. What do you see the county's role is in the expansion of the housing inventory in Tom Green County?
We'll, of course, always work with the chamber and the, and the economic development people, but honestly, and, and maybe I'm looking at this all wrong, but the only thing I can think of is we can keep taxes low and keep the cost of living down. Otherwise, it's none of our dealings.
Thank you very much. Lori Wilson, same question. What do you see as the county's role in the expansion of the housing inventory for Tom Green County?
Well, our role is different in that anything going on within the city limits is not our jurisdiction. Out in the county, it's different. The city has a lot of guidelines and regulations. The counties are there, but not the same. We need to be sure that we are just coming alongside the other interested parties, our real estate agents, our developers, our builders. Helping them maintain, it will help them if we can help maintain the lifestyle that we have here, that we can continue to promote this as an acceptable place to live and raise your family and promote all the things that we offer so that people will want to live here. In the county, one thing that we really have to be careful about in those developments is that the roads are there to support them, that the water is there to support them and that the school districts that they're moving into can handle that load, too. So it's a, it's a burden that we have to all work together to find the solutions to.
Thank you very much. We're going to finish up question eight with Mr. Bill Ford. Same question. What do you see as the county's role in expanding of the inventory of housing in Tom Green County?
It's a continuing role. We've continuously worked with the developers at, out in the county to, to put in subdivisions to, to build homes and houses, whether, whatever size they want. You know, we, we, we set up guidelines for 10-acre, 20-acre, whatever it is they want to build, but constantly meeting with these developers to put in subdivisions with a criteria in place that we have to have certain amount of roads done or certain procedures done. We inspect the roads. I go out all the time and expect, make sure they're done correctly. And we're always dealing with the water issue. They got to provide water or they got to have proof that there's water at that, that subdivision. So we're, it's a constant motion, but we constantly talking to everybody in place we need to talk to, to make sure that we do that. And we've got, like we talked about earlier, we've got water issues in some areas and we've got, and we're constantly repairing and, and right now, we're not so much repairing roads, we're replacing roads. And that's the, that's the timeline that takes longer. So we'll get there and a lot of it will be, be done.
All right, thank you very much. We're going down to question number nine. And this is addressing kind of the managerial political part of the job of county commissioner. I'm going to try to compress a lot into one question here, so bear with me. We're going to start with Dustin Barton on this one. And I'll just start by saying, obviously, the county's a very complicated political landscape. Tom Green County, for example, there's 27 elected officials. And I, when I heard this, talking to people, I had to actually look at it. And when I looked at it, it made sense because there's a lot of elected officials. Here's a question. And again, we're going to start with Mr. Barton. As county commissioner, how will you work with the wide range of elected officials as well as the elected officials in the city, key stakeholders, including ASU, Goodfellow, and the Chamber of Commerce and others?
Reach out, communicate, go by. And, you know, if elected, first thing you do is you go meet everybody that you're going to be involved with. A simple handshake, few minutes' talk and communicate with them and see how y'all can help each other out. Not much more than you can do besides, you know, pick up the phone or go meet them.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Nanny, same question. As county commissioner, how will you work with a wide range of elected officials at the county, as well as elected officials in the city and other stakeholders, including ASU, Goodfellow, Chamber of Commerce, and others?
I want to meet with all of them and let them know that I'm a team player. We're all in the same boat. We're, we're all going in the same direction. We, we all need to be set in motion, going in the same direction. And, and another analogy of a boat, a rising tide raises all vessels. What helps the county helps ASU, helps the city. It's all for the best of the people of this county and that's what I'm here for.
Very good. Thank you. Lori Wilson, same question. As county commissioner, how would you work with a wide range of county-elected officials, as well as elected officials in the city and other key stakeholders, including ASU, Goodfellow, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, yes, sir. Well, for me, it's all, I would, I'm going to work with them the same as I would work with anybody else. else. It's all about relationships. As an educator, you know that you're not going to ever get anywhere with a student or their family if they don't know that you care about them and you don't have a relationship with them. I'm all about building relationships and you do that over time, you do that by spending time with each other. I think that regular scheduled meetings, not monthly necessarily, but quarterly, and that would be something that would be decided, would be beneficial for everyone to sit down and talk and have those plans together. Where have we been? Where are we going? How are we getting there? How do we need to reevaluate? A lot of those elected officials, their budgets do come through the county or at least a portion of them. So you need to have that communication with them so that you know, what are your needs? How can we help you? What can we get for you? Because I mean, that's the job. The whole job is serving and how can we help others? So build those relationships and see how you can serve.
Very good. Thank you. Bill Ford, same question. As county commissioner, how will you work with the wide range of elected officials as well as key stakeholders, including ASU, Goodfellow, and the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, when I first took this job, finding out that there was 26 or 7 elected officials became an alarming event for me. And you don't just go knock on the door and say, hey, I want to work with you. You got to earn it. And they do need you and we need them. And after a time, it works out great. And you find that they're on the same page and everybody's wanting the same thing. But when it comes to budget, get ready because it's a, you know, it's time they're going to dig their heels in the sand and they're going to want things. And we work that way. It's just, it's just the way it's built. It's probably one of the best checks and balances in the country that we have is to have that kind of a deal. And with Goodfellow and ASU and the city and the chamber, I mean, there's very few times I'm not involved with someone of that entities every week and every month. And we just, we have to work together. They need our help, we certainly need their help, and we ask them for their expert advice. ASU's have got abundance of advice. I mean, they're great people over there. It's a pleasure.
Thank you so much. And finishing, question number nine, Coco Simpson. As county commissioner, how will you work with a wide range of elected officials at the city as well with other key stakeholders, including ASU, Goodfellow, and the Chamber of Commerce and others?
Well, through this journey, I've already had the opportunity to meet and visit with many of our elected officials. I visited with them earlier, just trying to figure out what my role as commissioner is with all of these elected officials, what their role is and what they do and how we work together. So I think I have pretty good relationships with a big chunk of them already. As a member of the chamber here in San Angelo, I know quite a few chamber employees already and through leadership in Angelo, I've met a lot of them as well. I'm an ASU alum, so I have connections at ASU already. Being here for as many years as I have, I have quite a few connections at Goodfellow also. So I just look to strengthen those connections with each other. And I understand at budget time, it's probably going to get a little hairy, but that's what we do. We fight for things that we believe in and this county is something I believe in and will fight very much for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're coming down to the end here. I'm going to ask the obligatory question. We're going to start with Sean Nanny this time, question number 10. All of you are successful in your own rights. And the question is, if elected, how much time will you be able to devote to the fulfillment of your duties as county commissioner?
I'm always going to be on call and it will be my number one priority. Yes, I do have some businesses that I run. I've slowed way down in one of them. But when my son was eight weeks old, we couldn't afford a babysitter. And that little boy went to work with me every day until he started kindergarten. And everybody said, you can't do both. You can't raise a child and build a business. But I did it. I built a hell of a business and I raised a fine young man. So my commitment will be to this county. I will be on call. The only thing that will supersede that is the safety of my wife and children.
Thank you very much. Lori Wilson, same question. If elected, how much time will you devote to the fulfillment of your duties as county commissioner?
Well, from day one of my campaign, on all of my campaign material, on all of my internet locations, social media, the answer's there and it has been from day one. I will be your full-time, all the time, all for you commissioner. I am no longer a business owner. I am no longer tied to a job and an employee of someone else. I don't have any customers or clients that I'm going to have to walk away from to do this. I'm here, the time is right in my life for me to serve full-time, and I'm very excited about the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Bill Ford, same question. If reelected, how much time will you devote to the fulfillment of your duties as county commissioner?
Well, the beauty of this business is it's a cell phone puts you in contact with everybody 24/7. And I wasn't in the job a week and a half and somebody posted my cellphone number on the telephone pole on Main Street of Cristobal. And it said, for road and bridge repair, call this number. And it's been ringing ever since. And I don't care what time of the day or night, when I call, when somebody calls, who answers the phone when you call? Lori?
I'm sorry?
When you call, who answers the phone?
We have a really good relationship. Bill answers my phone every time I call him. I think he's scared of me.
I was scared to death of her. So, but I'm telling you, that's what you have to do. And you're always on the job, whether you're not on the job or not. I mean, you're there, you can make decisions and do it. And the beauty, I just get text messages and VFDs in one in another county. Just tell me about the alerts are getting out there for the drill, we may have to change our game plan on stuff. So it's just, it's constantly in motion that you're thinking about taking care of your constituents, your neighbors. These are my friends and everybody. I've lived in San Angelo 20 years before I moved to Cristobal. And you know, this is my neighborhood. My shop is six blocks away. So I'm not unfamiliar with what's going on around the area and I'm in constant motion. I don't put 75,000 miles on a truck in two years without, you know, doing something.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Coco Simpson, same question. If elected, how much time will you devote to the fulfillment of your duties as county commissioner?
I'm going to say the same thing I said last week. I'm going to be a full-time commissioner because that's what you deserve.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Barton, finishing out question 10 and all the questions. If elected, how much time will you spend and devote to the fulfillment of your duties as a county commissioner?
Well, from the beginning of us announcing that we were running, I didn't know it at the time, but I was actually in a race with somebody else to announce that they were running for Tom Green County Commissioner. That person's going on to a different race right now. But we announced from the first day we were running and we were the first people announcing that we were going to run for this position, that we were going to be your 24/7 commissioner, seven days a week, working juvenile probation. I'm on call anyway for it 24/7. So we're not going to change anything up, except I won't have any other jobs but being a Tom Green County Commissioner.
Thank you very much. That was 10, those were 10 challenging questions. Let's give these great candidates a huge round of applause. I want to say to everybody that the video of this forum will be provided with links through the chamber website, sanangelo.org, starting tomorrow. So if you have friends that weren't able to make it here this evening, please have them take a look at the questions and responses, particularly if they're in precinct four, to help them make their informed decision. I think we heard some diversity of opinion and approach here, which is great because we would hate to hear the same answer to the same question from all five candidates. So everyone's done a great job. And we're going to go into the closing statements and we're going to do, as per the rules and reverse order that we started, and we're going to start with Mr. Barton first to do his closing two minutes statement.
All right, again, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to listen to us go through another forum. Again, thanks to Chamber of Commerce and Fort Concho. We've done this several times now and again, we have come up with different ideas. I love this community. I love precinct four. I never can get away from it for very long. This has been my home and will be my home until the, you know, until I'm putting the ground. My family and I have been here my entire life. I am the son of Louis and Barbara Barton and have not ever lived a better life because of the people of precinct four. There's no way I could have lived a better life. So thank y'all, everybody in precinct four and Tom Green County for making my life what y'all have. I'm asking for your vote, starting February 14th on Valentine's Day. Is early voting when it starts? The primary will be on March 1st and end on March 1st. I'm asking for your vote because I'm going to dedicate everything I have, everything my family has, to maintaining and making precinct four a much, much better place than it is now. And I already think it's a great place. But it's time to get our trust back in our government, work with the people for the people, the constituents of precinct four in Tom Green County. So I would appreciate your vote come February 14th or March 1st. So go on a date, take a date and go out and vote, and then go out and eat and keep the economy booming. I love you guys, precinct four and Tom Green County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coco Simpson? Yeah, let's do that. I invite you to give your closing statement, Ms. Simpson.
Thanks. Once again, I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this and thank all of you guys for coming out. Y'all have a big decision to make pretty soon that's going to affect all of us. Early voting does start Monday, as he said. Few things to think about before you hit the polls. I have the business acumen to make the most of our $55 million budget. I have a knowledge of the issues and the people's skills to work with elected officials on projects and actually get them done. I've developed a network of people throughout the Concho Valley for support. I have bring a diversity of thought to the court that will challenge the group think that's gone on for far too long and will help us think outside of the box in solving problems proactively. And I'll be the full-time commissioner that you deserve. Look at how many candidates are up on the stage. Precinct four is ready for a change. CocoSimpson.com is where you can find out more about me or help with the campaign. I'm a fiscal conservative that will put Tom Green County first in every decision made. Put me to work for you and let's do this. My name is Coco Simpson and I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ford, I invite you to make your two-minute closing statement.
Well, thank you. I thought I was going to be weary on this one, but you know, I'm not. This has been the best one and I really appreciate the questions. They've been really good and they're provoking and they need to provoke us into making, we're doing our job for the county. And I love this county. I've, you know, been here all but 10 years of my life and that's quite a bit of years. And every community, every neighborhood I've lived in has been, something has lifted me up to some kind of servant, you know, from a Boy Scout leader to a school board member to the board of Boys Ranch to Rotary for 15 years. And you know, you do, you constantly leave yourself in motion. And that's what I love about this job. There's nothing, nothing to slow you down. You got always something to keep you on task. And especially on my case, well, I have a legacy of family that started in the 1800s in my grandfather, my father, my parents. You know, I've got family here. My daughter and son-in-law live in Wal, got four grandkids. My son lives here in San Angelo. So we do, we do what we have to do for our family. And but this community in this town is our family, in our county. So I work real hard to keep it intact. And I don't like to say things, but I don't tolerate the things that are bad for our neighbors and bad for our community. So I'm kind of intolerant about some things, but I think it's for the good. And I've done a good job in nine and a half years and I'm going to continue to do that. And I appreciate y'all's vote and I'll be back next year.
Thank you very much. Lori Wilson, I invite you to give your two-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I truly believe that I really am your best choice for commissioner. I have sat up here tonight giving you accurate answers to the questions because I have been at these court meetings since 2017. I have been going. I've done the research. I can tell you what I am not is a radical activist. I am not an alarmist. I am not a naysayer and I'm not someone who presents incorrect information. What I am is a realist. I am an analyst. I am a researcher, a problem solver, a facilitator. I'm here to bring people together, the right people together to meet needs and solve problems. I'm here to be a voice for all the people. I'm your only candidate who filed with their paperwork, signing on to the code of fair campaign practices. It's on file, it's on record, you can go look and see it. I have promised to conduct my campaign with decency, honesty, and fair play and treat every candidate that way. I'm here for you. The time is right for a change. The time is right for Lori Wilson to step up and serve as your commissioner. I truly will be there, full-time, all the time, all for you. I would very much appreciate you placing your trust in me and giving me your vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we'll close out the evening with Mr. Sean Nanny. I invite you to give your two-minute closing statement.
And once again, thank y'all for hosting this. Thank everybody for being here. This campaign has been a learning experience, sometimes a very stressful experience, but it's also been quite rewarding. First and foremost, it has reminded me of how much my wife loves me and supports me. I appreciate that. It has also allowed me to meet many new people and learn about their concerns and desires for the future of our precinct and county. Five of those people are in this race, four of them are sitting up here with me. We each have a vision for the future of precinct four and desire to be a part of that future. And having six candidates in a race says a lot. To me, it says it's time for a change. It's time for results, not excuses. It's time for action and not talk. It's time for a commissioner that promotes prosperity and not fear. It's time to keep more of your money in your pocket. Vote for me, Sean Nanny, in the Republican primary and let's make that change for precinct four and Tom Green County. Thank you.
Okay, as moderator, I get to make my closing statement. I want, first of all, once again, thank these wonderful candidates for the service they're giving to our community by running for office. I can tell you, this is not an easy thing to do. It's a selfless act. And my only regret this evening is I don't live in precinct four, so I don't get to vote for any of you. But anyway, y'all have some good choices out there. And my message to you tonight is simple. I guarantee you, everybody in this room will vote. People don't come to candidates forum and not vote. The issue we have as a community, not only in Tom Green County and in Texas, but as a nation, is that we've grown complacent with our democracy. We've grown disinterested in local government. We focus too much on the federal races and not enough on the local. I can tell you, the people sitting at this table, the people who are running for county judge, our local government affect our lives every single day. And to have a single-digit percentage turnout rate in the greatest democracy in the world for a local race is really an embarrassment and unacceptable. So my charge to everyone in the audience today is to get out into your neighborhoods and tell people, encourage people to vote. As we heard, Valentine's Day starts early voting, March 1st is the primary. And I want to see us as a county turn out numbers that we're proud of in terms of participation and not embarrassed about. And that's something I feel very passionate about. You're going to hear a whole lot from the chamber over the next few weeks over getting out the vote and participating. But each and every one in this room has a role to play in that. People need to care about what happens here. We are a fantastic community. San Angelo, by Moody's Analytics, was just named the number one quality of life community in the state of Texas. That's something we have to fight for, protect, and continue to promote. And in order to do that, we need the right elected officials on the seat. And the only way to get that done is to have participation from the voters. So help me do that. And once again, let's have a huge round of applause for these fantastic people sitting in front of you tonight. And with that, I call this adjourned. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Drive safe and support your local restaurants. Go out for a bite.